Item C, Shadow Hills Magnet Academy Student Performance. Dr. Askeer.
Yes, thank you. As I was saying, you're in for a second treat as we are every board meeting. I am very proud to introduce the Principal of Shadow Hills Magnet Academy, Dr. Spates, to introduce her students that are going to be performing this afternoon.
All right. Good afternoon, Board President. Oh, I'll wait. Oh, there you are. Jumping right in. Good afternoon, Board President Hunt, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member Reyes Salmaron, Dr. Maldonado, our wonderful Superintendent and Cabinet. It is a pleasure to be here this evening with two amazing future Principals who are currently serving as my Assistant Principals. If you will stand, please, Mr. Michael Richardson. And another future Principal, but my current Assistant Principal, Mrs. Mindy Hampton. I would like to introduce our fabulous Mr. Merrill, who developed the Robotics Program at Shadow Hills. He and his students have a special performance for us. Mr. Merrill.
Well, this isn't going to be as awesome as Palm Tree. Sorry to come against that. Why don't we move it right over here? So I have members of our VEX Robotics Team. So I have Atlantis Vincent. Atlantis Vincent. He's actually the number one Math Lead, eighth grade Math Lead in the district, right here. Right? Mm-hmm. Yes. Then we have Johnny Salazar on the far right. And on the far left is Ivan Gomez. He's also a Math Lead. So we're going to do a simple demonstration. Atlantis, why don't you go ahead and get the cubes? Let's get this. All right. Here you go. Why don't you put them out there? So what you're seeing here is a robot that was produced by the students. So we have a team. This is our first year of actually working in VEX. As you may know, lots of people are here. Mr. Maldonado knows that we did Lego before, but we are now doing VEX, so we're kind of bringing up our game a little bit. So this particular challenge was a challenge where we had to take bricks or blocks, as you see here, and put them into these receptacles that are over here. This is a modified field. We're not going to put the whole field. It would have been too large and too much trouble to put it in today. So we're just doing kind of a small demo to show you what it is. But basically, what they had to do is take the blocks that were on the field and then sort them into different bins. And not only did they have to collect the blocks, but they had to sort them into different sizes, different colors, and they got more points by doing that. So all these blocks are just spread all over the field, and then their job was to go and collect them and then put them in the proper receptacle. So what we're going to do, we only have one of them, but there were three of them on a field, and there were three different sizes. We only brought two just to kind of show you what it kind of looks like. Now, the robot itself, student-built robot, they worked on it really hard. It's very complicated, which is amazing. So what you're seeing here are eighth graders, and this is like a culminating project for them. So they've, all of these kids up here, have taken me more times than I can count over their three years. Some of them have taken me probably for, oh, boy, nine different classes that I teach. So this is, so this particular challenge has a remote control part, and it also has an autonomous part. So autonomous means that the robot would move by itself. We're not going to do that part because it'd just take too long. But what we're going to do is we're going to show how this thing collects the blocks and then places them in there. And the robot, they call it Vortex, is what they call it. All right? Okay, you ready? You ready to make it happen? All right, let's see this. Ivan, why don't you go over there and make sure they don't go off the edge? Go ahead and move towards it. Go ahead and move towards it, Atlantis. Go ahead and move up there. Go ahead and get up there. There you go. Now, it's been a while since they practiced. Our competition was back in December. It's okay. There we go. So you can see what it does is that it picks up the blocks, and it has different levels for the blue and the yellow blocks, or green in this case, and then it's able to put them, sort them specifically, right? And then they would go to a different block in order to put the green ones in there. So they would go to something else, and that's how they would score points, is there's levels in there, and obviously, you know, we'd be moving a lot faster to get it done. But you can see, again, the display of the complicated method by which they're using in order to collect these blocks and bring it all together. It's pretty amazing. Anyways, it takes, takes a lot of time and effort in order to come through with this, and my students spend a lot of time before school, during school, in order to create this. This is not a class. This is what they do on their own time, right? Mm-hmm. Yeah. That's good. All right, that's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Please give our students and teacher a hand.
Why don't we give our students a great big hand?
Thank you so much, Mr. Merrill. I said, you know, the robot keeps getting bigger and bigger, right? But I can see our students, they're going to be working next door, right? Locking all those other space companies, right? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Item D, Accountability Progress Report, Shadow Hills Magnet Academy. Dr. Askeer.
Yes, thank you. That was wonderful, Mr. Merrill. Thank you so much. I'd like to call the audience's attention to the Shadow Hills Bulletin Board to my right, Finding Your Winning Era. You're going to hear all about it in just a few, in just a few seconds. So with that, it's my pleasure to reintroduce Dr. Spates, the Principal of Shadow Hills Magnet Academy.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'm not sure if you know that we have some celebrities in the house, so I'd like to thank them for coming. First, if we have members of our Palmdale School District Promise League Girls or Boys Basketball Team that are in eighth grade, please stand. Just, you can stand. Just want to stand so that you guys can be recognized. If there are members of our Shadow Hills Winning Math Leads Team who also took first, second, and third place, please stand. If you are a family member who worked on our winning float that won the first place in the Winter Parade, please stand. Thank you, thank you. And if you are an amazing Shadow Hills faculty, our staff person, or family, please stand. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. At Shadow Hills this year, we continue to focus on fulfilling the promise. We are focused on high intellectual performance, building on student strengths, cultures, languages, and experiences to create new successes, and integrity and community. As you will see, there is no staff with hearts that are bigger than the Shadow Hills staff. Capturing kids' hearts, it isn't a program, it is who we are. We pour our heart into everything we do. Now, Taylor Swift, she just finished her Eras Tour. Our students, led by Ms. Brown, our yearbook is their Middle School Era. And Shadow Hills, we have re-entered our winning era. So I hope you will enjoy the tour of our winning era. Let's go. We began our year with a refreshed campus. I'm going to cry, it's so beautiful. Our main building received new paint, new floors, new bulletin boards for teachers to display student work. A new air conditioning was installed in our refurbished gymnasium. Thank you to Susie Stillo, the Director of Maintenance and Operations, and Al Sai for coordinating a flawless installation with no disruption to school operations and student schedules. Our students received refurbished locker rooms and refreshed basketball courts with new paints and nets. Thank you to the Palmdale School District Board of Trustees Cabinet, our phenomenal painters, Director Susie Stillo, and her awesome Maintenance and Operations Team for the heart they poured into our campus all summer and truly throughout the year. And our Athletic Director, Mr. Ray Fel, who worked his connections to get our students new basketball nets to start the school. The stage was set for our students to return to a beautiful and clean campus on the first day of school. The winds continued. We welcomed our students back with hundreds of families and district leaders and employees lining our roundabout to welcome, cheer on, and give our students words of encouragement on their first day back to school. Thank you to Mr. Richardson for this idea. Shadow Hills beat all the middle schools with the most duck adoptions. Woo, woo, yes! And our Barbie, designed by Ms. Brown, actually won the duck race. Thank you to Ms. Brown for designing our winning duck. Thanks to the creativity and the countless hours put in by our families and our parent community liaison, Mrs. Berta Pata, Shadow Hills won first place for small floats in the Palmdale School District Winter Parade. Yes, our families are amazing. Most recently, we supported the Palmdale Foundation and raised $800 for students and staff. Thank you again to Mrs. Pata and Mrs. Cores, our librarian, for making this happen. The Shadow Hills winning era continues. Shadow Hills student, Mr. Michael Acosta, you may know him, another celebrity, he won the Student Board Member Trustee seat after competing against the other Palmdale School District K through eight schools. Shadow Hills is the first middle school in Palmdale School District to launch the Latino Family Literacy Project. Ms. Plum, our science teacher, secured an awesome donation from Hoka Shoes so that all students participating in our track and field event received high-end running shoes for free. We established a relationship with Raising Cane's Chicken, who has donated literally thousands of gift certificates to our students to celebrate their achievement, gifts for special events, and they provided food for our boys mentoring group. Our winning era continues as we participated in various district competitions. Mr. Merrill revived the Shadow Hills Robotics Team, and they were once again participating in competitions. Thanks to Mr. Van Der Zee coaching Shadow, his coaching, Shadow Hills won first place in our district Math Leads Competition. Our eighth graders took first, second, and third individually. This has never been done before. Coach St. Louis led our eighth-grade girls' basketball team to win the Palmdale Promise League Championships. Coach Ray Fel led our eighth-grade boys' basketball team to win the Palmdale School District Promise League Championships. I told them I needed banners, we got banners. POC Plus is something we do. It is not, it is not something we do, it is who we are becoming. A true professional learning community with the goal of building our collective capacity to improve student achievement and fulfill the Palmdale promise. Our teachers lead professional learning. Mr. Boland launched us this year with his presentation, Foster Care: Perception Versus Reality. Our site leadership team is finishing a book study on John Hattie's Visible Learning. I may have been a paparazzi in my past life, so I caught two members of our leadership team in actually engaging in intellectual discussion about their reading. Looks fun, but I promise intellectual work was happening. Our faculty and staff identified common challenges and began the cycle of inquiry, then presented their learning to build our capacity to serve all students well. This year, we also began collegial visits. This year, we created space within the school day for teachers to participate in collegial visits, where teachers get to visit their colleagues' classrooms for inspiration and to spark professional conversation around their pedagogical practices. The Shadow Hills Academy of Engineering and Design transforms the conventional middle school steam curriculum into a school where science, technology, engineering, and design are taught through inquiry, project-based learning, and hands-on exploration as a pathway towards our students filling their college and career dreams. We began the year celebrating 33 gifted students who reclassified and can now read, write, think, and speak in two languages, thanks to the incredible teaching practices by Mrs. Donkor. Yes. This year, our students also made it abundantly clear that they enjoy not learning about their culture and heritage, but the heritage and culture of others. Shadow Hills launched its first Latino and Black Knowledge Bowl teams. You will notice both teams were very diverse. Mr. Benitez led our Latino Knowledge Bowl team, and Mrs. Owens led our Black Knowledge Bowl team. Our students enjoyed two schoolyard wrap assemblies, one focused on Black history and culture, and the other focused on Latinx history and culture, both which are American culture and history. This year, our parent community liaison, Mrs. Berta Pata, has done a phenomenal job re-engaging families, developing partnerships with businesses in the community that allow us to provide gift certificates and incentives from Raising Cane's Chicken, Frozen Penguin, In-N-Out, Shaky's Pizza, for students who have improved attendance, get to class on time, and make positive behavior choices. We began the year with a full house of over 300 attendees at our parent orientation sessions and back-to-school night. Kind of felt like a club when you were in college. I don't think Ms. Dr. Askeer could get in the door, there's so many people. Our parent orientation sessions and our monthly parent meetings are always a packed house. Thank you to the NOAA Mentoring Group and the Men of Kappa Alpha Psi for providing monthly workshops to students who participate in our boys mentoring group. Raising Cane has also provided lunch for these students. We are thrilled to now partner with Antelope Valley Community Uplift Foundation, who will begin to offer additional mentoring support for our group of boys. Next up, I'd like to bring my assistant, awesome Assistant Principal, future Principal, Mr. Michael Richardson.
Needless to say, we are proud of our students, their progress, the reporting period, two GPA data. 437 Shadow Hills students earned between a 3.0 and a 4.0 GPA. We know that when we see behaviors in students, it is often because they have issues on their heart and mind. If we don't create space for them to address what is on their heart and minds, we will continue to simply discipline behavior. To engage and support our students, we celebrate students with perfect and most improved attendance. Our average attendance rate is 92%. We would like to thank our attendance clerks. Yes, give it up, give it up. And dare I say, we have the best attendance clerk in the entire district, Mrs. Jessica Rico. Miss Jessica Rico, for her attention to attendance, she cares and she is absolutely meticulous. We've been intentional with strategies. We are implementing to respond to students' behavioral needs that address the whole child. The 50% decrease in suspensions directly correlated to the following strategies our team has implemented. Our teachers facilitate 33 extra-curricular activities where they offer tutoring in every subject, quiet, safe space, game rooms, chess club, and a swag club. Students design new spirit wear, then students voted on their favorites, and we ordered for our students. Dr. Burns, our nationally-recognized counselor, provides consistent support throughout the year through engaging socio-emotional learning lessons to all of our students. Ooh, that must be somebody important. Dr. Veray, one of our resource specialists and co-teachers facilitates a student group to help students with positive social skills. We recently began a contract with Ebony Safe Space to provide group therapy for over 80 students in the areas of self-esteem, self-awareness, anger management, and coping and resilience to make sure that they have the best educational opportunities at Shadow Hills. We have crafted a process to respond to the entire child and support students who are having a hard time. We have named this team the Rise Team. I'd like to start with this quote. "Students are not giving us a hard time, they are having a hard time." We cannot talk about positive behavior and students' academic process without sharing the work of the MTSS team, which we've named our Rise Team. An amazing team formed this year to craft our process to support students who are not giving us a hard time, but who are having a hard time. The team consists of our counselor, Dr. Burns, our literacy coach, Ms. Musumichi, our restorative justice teacher, Mr. Jackson, and our school psychologist, Ms. Veduro, a general education teacher, Mrs. Johnson, and one of our SDC teachers, Mrs. Johnson, and our administrative team. It is an asset-based process where we begin with identifying students' strengths and display them on our video screen and print for the student. Yes, that's right, we bring the student in so they, we can talk to them and we can help them along the way. We look at multiple data sources to identify students. Ediclima, which has learning attendance and behavior, behavior data, faculty and staff recommendations on a school-wide proactive student support spreadsheet. To learn about the student, we use the aforementioned data as well as a student survey to help us understand the student's experience at Shadow Hills. We use a caregiver survey, a faculty survey, and student observations as well. We meet with the student, their caregiver, and the team to discuss the student's strengths and identify a long- and short-term goal, provide the family with supports, and we end the meeting with a student support plan, then cycle back in three weeks. We are beta-testing our process this year and refining as we go. Based on our CASP data in 2023, we have 30% of our students meet and exceed the state standard. Come on, give it up, that's big. To improve our scores, we've added one new language arts elective focused on Latinx contributors in science, technology, engineering, and math. We added a new ELA support class led by our phenomenal ELD teacher, Mrs. Donkor, the course titled is Multicultural Literature. In ELA, 521 of the 789 students improved their Lexile score. That is awesome. Based upon our CASP scores in 2020, 22, 23, 14% of our students met and exceeded the standard in math. To improve our scores, Mr. St. Louis has begun facilitating a voluntary CASP prep course to review state standards, and we have close to 40 to 50 students, sixth-grade students, that are eager to attend every single day and have said that they are getting blue or green on the state test. So next year, we are planning a morning support program to accelerate student learning to prepare them to access the math standards. 540 out of 790 students improved their quantile score. And I would like to say this, I think I messed up the PowerPoint, but in, in less than a year, Dr. Spates has come along and changed the very core of Shadow Hills. I appreciate her leadership, and she has done a tremendous job. We got to celebrate this woman.
As I always say, we do nothing great on our own. It was not me. It is a team, and we are a work in progress, but it's only together that we rise. We hope you enjoyed the tour, the winning tour at Shadow Hills. This is our, we have re-entered our winning era. What questions can we answer?
No questions, but again, from what Mr. Richardson said, thank you for what you are doing, leading the school. Thank you both for being there as well to support, and I have seen a magnificent change this year, so I appreciate all the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Keep doing what you're doing.
I'm just proud that the family is getting together, and the best part of our success is that I didn't get any complaints. So I'm very happy.
I'm just amazed at seeing the amount of support you have out here behind you, and that, that just makes it all that better, all the better.
Thank you. And we have Ms. Brown, our amazing art teacher. She and her students made you all Winning Eras Tours bracelets, and we have swag bags for you that we'd like to give you. Thank you.
B, CSEA, Mrs. Perkins.
Good evening.
Good evening. Cabinet Student Board Member, Board Trustees, and CSCA Palmdale Chapter 296 Members. As you know, I'm Helena Perkins, past president of CSCA's Palmdale Chapter 296 and the Area D Director for the largest classified employee union in America. Thank you to Chapter President Michael Oak for affording me the opportunity to address the board tonight in his absence. I would like to congratulate Palm Tree and Shadow Hills on their student performances and accountability progress reports. Congratulations to Dos Camino students on their engagement recognition. My motto was and will always be, keep kids in something, or something will get in them. These schools are remembered to keep the students engaged in their environment.